Welcome to Santa Barbara Talks with Josh Molina. It's such a pleasure today to be here with Luce Reyes Martin, who's always got so much buzz around her. Everyone, you know, for a long time, everyone I talked to, her name comes up. It's always loose, loose, loose is so great. Loose is wonderful. She's fantastic. And you do so many things in the community. You're definitely somebody who's had a lot of impact. And everybody's always wondering, how far is loose going to go in this political world? So we're gonna have a good conversation today. Luce, how are you doing?
I'm doing well. Thank you. Glad to be here.
Yeah, thank you for taking some time. This is our second go around. You were one of my original guests when we were audio only. So it's so nice to be able to do it in this form as well today. So Luce, let's dive right in. You are running for District One on the Galita City Council. And I want to ask you about that and why you're running and what the issues are and just sort of give us an idea of what's important to you as you pursue this spot.
Yeah, great. Well, again, you know, I'm so glad to join you. It was really fun to be part of one of the first couple of folks when it was an audio podcast. And it's been really great to see the evolution, you know, over over time. And, you know, I'm one of those folks that tunes in to to listen to all different kinds of topics, whether it's music or parenting or other community issues. It's a it's a great fun show.
Thank you.
Well, you know, for the last eight years, I've served on the Galita School Board. And I was first appointed to the board because there was a vacancy in 2014. And then I was elected at large to two terms after that in November of 2014 and then in 2018. And during that time, you know, it's been just really great and fulfilling work. I've been elected by my colleagues twice to serve as board president. And I really worked hard to strengthen the district and really to serve students and teachers and staff and families and community members. You know, I think there's so much that a school district brings to community, even if you're not a parent or a teacher or directly involved with with the schools. And I think in addition to my, you know, elected service, I've been really active in just other community service groups, working on advocacy issues, or serving on nonprofit boards. And but really, the bottom line is, I love Galita. I think it's why I love being involved in so many things. It's just a wonderful community. And like others, I followed the redistricting process closely that the city went through. And in looking at, you know, what those final maps look like, I know I have a strong connection to the newly created District One, which is roughly, you know, that northeast corner on the mountainside of the Galita. And the people of this district, you know, my neighbors, their their parents, we've got lots of kids, working families, grandparents, retirees, and other working professionals. I know that they're they're teachers, they're nurses, they're first responders, they work in a lot of our local companies. And I decided to run for city council because I believe in public service. I want to make a positive difference right here in our community. And I think I have a lot to contribute. You know, I think I've shown a solid track record of being practical, being pragmatic, working together with other people, and ultimately being effective. I think I have a lot of broad and diverse experience, you know, both professionally and, you know, my volunteer work that I think positions me really well, to have an immediate impact on the district and really the city as a whole. I'm running a grassroots campaign that's really focused on talking directly with voters on the issues that are important to them and what they want to see in the future of our city. And that's why I've spent all summer knocking on doors and talking with residents. And I'll really focus on that and continue to do that all the way to Election Day.
Wow, that's, that's amazing. And you've done such a great job on the Galita School Board. So now you're going to have an opportunity to to work on some overlapping issues and some new issues and represent District One, you know, you do have an opponent, and we'll talk about him in a second. But talk to me a little bit about Galita and what that is. We know that Santa Barbara gets a lot of political attention. But Galita is really this fantastic community. You know, we have this name of it's the good land, of course, but we're also a tech hub. We have so many tech businesses in this community. And we have Communal Real Market Center. It's like this really vibrant shopping area. And we have Target. And, you know, we're trying to get more, more, more park space. But you know, in Old Town, we have recent Park. And of course, we have a lot of new housing that's been, was approved a while ago, and that's come online. And we do have incredible housing needs in the community. And Galita is a really good, you know, working class, family community. If you have kids, it's definitely a place where you can build a network and and build a family. And it's also a millennial, you know, Gen Z hub, too, you know, it's, there's so much for everybody. But talk to me about Galita and like what what you love about it. And if you are elected, what are the things you would like to improve, make better?
Well, I think you captured so much of what makes Galita really special. And, you know, I think I don't realize how much I really love this community until I have visitors come over, whether it's friends or family. And I'm just always talking about Galita, and how great this community is. And they're like, wow, there's a lot, there's a lot here. You know, I think people think of the Central Coast, and they think of, you know, the bigger cities, Santa Barbara, or San Luis Obispo, or wine, you know, the wine parts of the county. And this is truly just a special community. And I think what really encapsulates that for me is being on the school board. You know, I always say that there's nothing more personal than your kids and their education. So being on a school board, especially when you're having to work on issues where there might not be, you know, a consensus on on how to do something, or the opinions about something, or it's something that affects someone's, you know, child, you really have to be able to sit down and hear people out, hear lots of different perspectives, and and be, you know, both diplomatic, but also just truly genuine in in hearing people out. And I think that's what's really special about Galita is that over the last eight years, I've probably had hundreds of coffee meetings at, you know, Starbucks, or, you know, Old Town Coffee since it's been in place, or the Coffee Bean, or at a playground, where parents will come and bring their kids while we talk. And no matter what their background is, no matter how they might feel, or where they land, you know, on a political spectrum, I really prioritize sitting down and just talking things out. As one parent to another, as a community member to another, hearing out their concerns, sharing, you know, information that I might, you know, contribute that they might not know about maybe the whole picture about an issue. I think that's what really makes Galita special is that we're a small enough, tight knit community where we can do that. And where, you know, I really think it's, you know, a responsibility of an elected individual in any role, to put that time in, to really do that direct, you know, constituent service. But I really think it's just meeting people and and talking things out. To me, I think that's what really makes Galita special. It's how we can tackle problems together. We can talk to each other, not at each other. And more, more times than not, come to some kind of, you know, if it's not consensus, at least recognizing that, you know, all, you know, points of view have been heard, and that there's an explanation of how we've come to a decision. And we can move on and still have mutual respect for each other.
Great. Well, well said. Well put. Galita is an amazing place. I'm looking for the Lemon Festival returning after the pandemic.
I got my kids their wristbands for the, all the activities.
Yeah, my daughter loves it. When we saw the sign on Stork, she's like, it's coming back, you know, so.
And go to the Lemon Run, too.
The Lemon Run? Is that, is that involve running, Luce? I don't know.
There's a one K family walk.
Oh, okay. All right. That's all right. That's that sounds.
It benefits the Galita Education Foundation.
Oh, okay, great. I'll go to that after the pie eating contest.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
So, so I want to talk to you a little bit about specifically the Galita Council race you're running in District One against Roger Seves. He's been there four terms, I think, very long time. And he's running for reelection. There are no term limits in Galita. And I wanted to just sort of ask you, and I know you're a pro, you know, I know you're not going to say anything that's, you know, unseemly, or, you know, attacking. But as much as you can, can you talk a little bit about why a change is needed? I mean, Roger's a, he's a good guy, you know, he's a Democrat, he's, he's not progressive, but he is a Democrat. Why do we need a change?
Well, what I think is really exciting about this race, and you know, this is what I've been talking about when I I'm out knocking on doors, is for the first time, my neighbors and the residents of District One get to elect our own council representative, who's going to be directly accountable to, you know, the specific needs of our neighborhoods and our community. And I think that's really exciting. And so I'm running because I believe voters should have a choice. And I'm presenting my background and my experience, and, you know, my fresh perspective on the issues the city is facing. I have a lot of respect for Roger, but I'm focused on my campaign and my message. But I will say, you know, generally, when I'm talking to residents, you know, I hear so much, you know, won't be surprising, how much people love Galita. I hear that a lot. But I also hear about, you know, the things that they're worried about, or concerns that they have. They want to see us do more to address bicycle and pedestrian safety. They want to see more action to address climate change that is really focused locally, like preparing us for the threat of wildfires, addressing our energy issues, working more collaboratively with the water district. They respect and want more connections with our first responders to address public safety issues, whether that's our firefighters or sheriff's deputies. They want to see roads improved. They want more parks and rec opportunities. They want to talk openly and honestly about how we're going to address our housing needs, while carefully planning for the impacts that that brings, and giving residents an opportunity to talk that out and give input. I think those are really the issues that are most prevalent in the district. And I think in a lot of cases throughout the city. And so I'm focused on, you know, what I want to see with with those issues, how I want to work to represent our community. And, you know, I think that I'm the best choice to address those issues, to to work collaboratively with residents and the rest of the council and our regional partners. Because Galita is wonderful, but we're not an island. We can't do everything on our own. We do have to work, you know, regionally. And I think I have that experience and the enthusiasm and the commitment to just get things done and to communicate back to residents about what's going on, and to really just work hard on behalf of my constituents. So that's really what what I'm focused on. You know, I want to present, you know, you know, what I want to bring, and have voters decide.
Yeah, okay. Well, good, good. Well said. Just sort of stretching that a little bit. You know, you and I are both Mexican Americans, and you're, you, you know, you have an incredible story we're going to talk about a little bit later. But we talk about diversity. Diversity is important to you. It's important to so many people here, you know, in Santa Barbara, in California, in terms of representation. And so you, and diversity means a lot of things, you know. So but in this context, you know, you are Latina, running for office against a sitting Hispanic Latino candidate on, you know, on, on who's serving. So can you talk a little bit about the importance of diversity, and what that means in these leadership positions? It's, it's obviously important that you have a community of electeds who represent the community on the ground, you know, so they look like each other. You know, so in some ways, it's kind of a bummer that, one way or other, you know, we're still only going to have, you know, at least, you know, well, you know, for this race, you know, we're going to either have Luce or Roger. We're not going to have two members of the Latino, Latinx community on, on, you know, at least, you know, both of you specifically serving. And can you talk a little bit about that? Is it bittersweet that for you to get on, Roger has to leave? Wasn't, isn't it great? Maybe, you know, as minorities, as ethnic minorities, like, it always feels like, you know, we have to settle for one or two, right? But it's, it's like, like, you know, one or two is not enough, right? Like, it's four, four out of five, you know, or something like that. But can you talk about representation? And do you feel anything about, you know, maybe you're going to oust Roger, the one Mexican American who's been serving Galita on the council for the last, you know, 16 years?
Well, I will say, I think you're right. There's a lot of, diversity can mean a lot of different things. And so if I'm elected, I will be the first Latina elected to the Galita City Council. I'll be the first mom of young kids elected to the Galita City Council, which both of those, I think, really represent a big part of our city, and a perspective that we haven't had on our city council in the last 20 years. We have district elections, so that's the, you know, political playing field that we have to work with. And, you know, we both happen to live in District One. So, you know, that's how the chips, you know, fill out. And again, you know, I think that it's great that, you know, voters will have a choice. Voters know about, you know, both of us and candidates that will come up in other elections, as we continue this transition, this transition period towards district elections. So, you know, I think that I bring, you know, a different perspective on diversity. And I think it's great that the city, you know, continues to have a representation. And I think we can keep building on that. Not only, you know, at the city council level, but in looking at boards and commissions and advisory committees. That's another area that, you know, I want to make a contribution in really encouraging more diversity on those spaces, so that, you know, we can have more input, you know, even at those places. Not everyone wants to, you know, be in an elected office, but they still want to give back, and they want to be involved. And those are often great opportunities for people to get involved.
Yeah, those boards and commissions, definitely. And really, we talk about diversity should be in hiring, it should be in appointments to those boards and commissions, it should be up and down the organization, not in just the, the people who are elected. It's actually, statistically, we have more representation of Latinos who are elected than we do actually employees in management. And I've looked at some of the data. And so it's just interesting. But that's one of the things I think about is that, you know, the Latino community is so diverse, that not all are liberal, progressive, Democrats, some are moderates. Obviously, we know that so many are conservative, you know, like generations above us. And so it's just interesting that the first Latina elected might oust the first Latino elected on the Galita Council. But it is what it is. And, you know, we'll, we'll see what happens. On the issue of diversity, Luce, can you talk, there's people watching, and there's still people who say, why are we talking about this? Just let the best people win, and let them serve. Why do we have to sort of, you know, they say, we're not supposed to talk about race. So why do, why is there so much focus on diversity? Can you talk about why it's important for a Latina, working mom to be on the council, not to, not to talk about anyone else, and why they're not a part? But why is your perspective valuable?
Yeah, and you know, I think so much of it boils down to acknowledging the reality that we, we, we experience society and the world differently. And that's just a reality. And I think a good example of that, and you may have heard me share this story before, but, you know, during COVID, you know, on the school board, you know, at the very beginning, the first, you know, real couple of months where we were, you know, totally locked down, everybody was, you know, making, making do with Zoom at home, if that's what you had chosen to do. You know, I was really proud of our district for moving so quickly and aggressively to do everything they could to help support families. They, I knew they were, they were getting a lot of input from parents, whether that was from surveys that, you know, you and I took and responded to. I know phone calls were made, emails were sent out. And of course, people came to school board meetings. You know, for the first time, we had hundreds of people tuned in to our Zoom, you know, school board meetings. But I still felt like there was, there was something missing. There was a perspective that I wasn't hearing. And, you know, being a Latina, and having grown up in a, you know, working class immigrant, you know, community and family, I knew that was a big part of our district. And I wasn't hearing, you know, if they were okay, if they needed additional support, what was going on. And I know that things like responding to a survey on Parents Square, or answering a phone call or email, may not be as easily accessible for some of those families. They may be a barrier. So I reached out to a teacher that lives in Old Town. And, you know, she had actually come to a board meeting and said, you know, I shared many of those same concerns. So I called her up, and I said, hey, what if I came down with you one evening, and we walked the neighborhood, and talked to parents? And she said, yes, let's do it. So one night, you know, it was, you know, right in the thick of COVID and lockdown, I walked pretty much every street in Old Town, and just reached out and talked to anybody who was out walking their dog, or walking with their kids, or at the playground, whether it was at Nectarine Park, or Johnny Wallace Park. And, and said, you know, I'm bilingual, and so was saying, I'm loose, I'm on the school board, I'm really just out here with, you know, the maestra, to, or the teacher, to see, how are you doing? How is it going? You know, what could the district do to support you more? What do you want to share with me? And it was, it was really, really impactful. It's probably one of the most impactful things that I experienced over COVID. I heard so much appreciation for what the district was doing. I think they really felt like we were doing the best we could. But I heard over and over, you know, one story in particular that has never left me is one single mom, who had a kindergartner who had to stay at home alone most of the day, because mom had to work. And a neighbor was, you know, kind of coming in to check on him, make sure he, I mean, you know, he's having to navigate Zoom on his tablet on his own as a kindergartner. And I had a kindergartner at the same time. So it really touched me. And just hearing her, you know, trying to survive, and, and hearing from so many others who who work at our local grocery stores, and were worried about bringing COVID home, who were worried about how to, you know, put food on the table, who were worried about getting evicted, who didn't know where to get the, you know, most accurate information about COVID, you know, they may not be signed up for every public health email listserv, you know, that I may be on. And so I heard just over and over those kind of stories about how, you know, they felt like they were, they were missing information. And they were just working together to get by day to day. And so that really lit a fire under me to say, you know, I need to do more. I need to figure out how I can help, you know, these, these communities. They're part of my school family, you know, at Kellogg. And what can we do? And of course, they're part of the district. So we worked really hard to, as soon as we possibly could, safely have small cohorts of students from, you know, that had higher needs, you know, for being at home, to be able to come on campus, whether that was outdoors, or in a classroom with really small numbers, and just gradually build from there. And it was because I was very confident that as a district, we could do it, and we could do it safely. And because the alternative was a little five year old boy sitting at home alone, trying to do this on his own. So that was really motivating for me. And it's things like that, that I think that perspective, that lived experience that I have, and the willingness to, you know, go above and beyond, and go out there, and go directly to the people. And then, and then really work to figure out what can we do. I think that's the perspective that I would bring to the city council, and the kind of work ethic, and the kind of person I am, that I would bring to council.
Yeah, and I have to say that for anyone watching who thinks that's like political talking points, the story you just told, it's not, because I remember I was covering the Galita School Board at that time. And I remember watching you and saying the things that you just said now, during the Zooms, at the board meetings, and explaining those important perspectives, and consistently pushing for a return to school, and, you know, those debates that were happening. And I definitely remember you being an advocate for families who could not afford pods, for families who cannot, you know, afford to just work from home, or stay, stay at home. And obviously, we know that in a lot of families, and specifically like Latinx households, there's multiple generations, and people share. And so it's really tough if there's, if they can't go to school, in terms of the impacts of what that means at home. So that's very real. And you did push for that. And Galita was the head of Santa Barbara, in terms of returning to school and in person. So yeah, that's all legitimate and true. And, and, you know, you did a great job advocating for every, every kid, you know, in, in, in the, in the district at that time. And yeah, so then they went back to school, and it was great. And my daughter, she, she wears glasses, and she wore the mask. And she figured it out. It all, it all made, it all worked.
Oh, God.
You know, it just the fogging up of the lenses and everything. And now, she, and maybe your, your, your son, too, just this generation of, the mask is always going to be part of that. Like, I'm in a large group, I better wear my mask, you know, it's just what, what this generation's always going to be aware of. So it's not going to be a weird thing. It's an odd thing. It's like you.
Yeah, exactly.
In these settings. So that's a good transition. You're still serve on the Galita School Board. We just returned back to school. Talk to me about sort of the feeling, the energy of being able to start another school year.
Yeah, I think, you know, what's, what's really exciting, I think, especially for me, you know, so my son's in second grade. So we've really not had a typical year. And this really feels like a typical year. There's so many new things that I'm experiencing as a parent, like being able to walk, you know, my son all the way to, you know, his classroom door, or even hanging around, you know, on campus before the bell rings in the morning. You know, I'm, I'm loving that. It's, it's so fun. You know, I walk him to school every morning, gets his breakfast. Big tip for any Galita parents watching, don't, don't sleep on the breakfast. The breakfast is great. So he picks up breakfast, you know, and he goes and plays with his friends. And I get to have some time to, you know, chat with parents. And, you know, that connection with other parents, I didn't know what I was missing, until now. And so that's been really great to talk to parents really outside of just my, our, you know, the immediate classroom. I think the classroom parents get to know each other a little bit more. But I'm seeing parents with kids, you know, that are starting kindergarten, and hearing how they're doing. So that's been really wonderful. I know, you know, and I hear that at other schools, too, that those parent connections, you know, have really been something they've missed the last couple of years. And they're hoping to do more, more events to bring, you know, parent families together to build community. But otherwise, I'm hearing lots of positive things about the start to the school year. We've got back to school night coming up this next week, I think. And so that will be exciting. And yeah, you know, I think kids are, my son still carries his mask in his backpack. So he has it if he ever wants it, if he wants to put it on. But they're super excited, too, about the return of specialists. So having, you know, PE, STEAM, art, you know, I think gardening is back at some of the schools, and music. So I think that's really exciting for, for kids, too.
Yeah, my daughter just moved into third grade, which means PE now is Monday, Tuesday. So get it out of the way early in the week. So that's good. Although they have to run a little bit longer now that they're in the, so there are trade offs. And maybe, maybe you can work with the Kona Ice Company, because like, this last Friday was so hot, I was like, we want you guys back on campus. Because they, they were coming last year, but they, they couldn't be on campus. They'd have to park nearby, and we'd have to, you know, walk there, go there, get there somehow. And I'm waiting for Kona Ice to be back in the park.
Yes, they're cool. Everybody's favorite.
Exactly. So yeah, things seems to be going pretty well, you know, big picture, in terms of, you know, Glade Union School District, and the start of the school year. And everyone's really excited to have a normal year again. Let's talk a little bit about you and your professional situation. For a long time, or you worked at Santa Barbara City College for a few years as Public Information Officer. And you recently, about a year ago, moved to Planned Parenthood. So can you talk about what your job is at Planned Parenthood, Central Coast, and what you do? And just, you know, just a little bit about the work going on, Roe versus Wade? I mean, you're, you're at the center of the universe here with your job.
Yeah. And I'll, you know, add the disclaimer that I'm, you know, speaking, you know, as on my own, I'm not talking, you know, on behalf of the organization. But yeah, I've been really glad to be at Planned Parenthood, California, Central Coast, for a little over a year. I'm the Vice President of Community Engagement, which means I oversee the Education Department, the Public Affairs Department, and I do communications and marketing. And the affiliate covers the tri-counties, so Slow County, Santa Barbara County, and Ventura County. That's been really exciting part of this new role is getting to know communities Um, that's been really um, exciting part of this new role is getting to know uh, communities um, outside of, you know, just maybe the South Coast of Santa Barbara County or Santa Barbara County itself. Um, that's been really great uh, to to meet people and and make those connections in other parts of the Central Coast as well. Um, you know, when I, when I took the job, um, after, you know, nearly six years at Santa Barbara City College. Um, I was ready for, you know, something, a new challenge, um, you know, professionally. I never worked in the, you know, nonprofit uh, world. Um, I'd worked mostly, actually with four cities. That's how I started out my my professional career. Um, and and then, of course, higher education. Um, I knew, you know, a lot of the people that worked at Planned Parenthood, they were, you know, friends or people I respected, you know, really tremendously in the community. So I was really excited to, you know, make that move. Um, I didn't expect um, to be in a place where Roe v. Wade would be overturned. Um, I knew, you know, from being really involved, you know, on on the issues of reproductive rights. Um, that there were continued attacks, you know, throughout the country to really chip away at rights. Um, so I knew that that was kind of the environment that I was go- going into to really be a strong advocate for reproductive rights and justice. Um, but you know, it really wasn't until the first few months where I really, you know, was immersed in what was coming that I really started to have to grapple with uh, the reality that this was likely coming. Um, and I think what was most uh, crystallizing for that was the, you know, passage of uh, Texas's SB eight bill in September of twenty twenty-one. Um, I think that was really the clearest indication for me personally of where we were headed. Um, we, you know, I knew that that uh, Supreme Court case was going to be making its way this session and and you know, I really felt that that was going to, um, that was going to overturn Roe. Um, and you know, we saw that, you know, sadly happen, you know, this June. Um, and it's one of those things where even though you expected it or you knew it was coming, I think especially after we saw that leak leaked draft opinion in May, it still felt like a gut punch. Like, it still felt like oh my gosh, now it's it's real. It really happened. It's in black and white and print. Um, and then, of course, seeing how quickly um, in the weeks after that, we've seen state after state, you know, enact um, bans um, essentially. Um, and it's, it's been a lot. Um, but you know, I think for me, what I take great pride in and how I, you know, uh, cope with it or deal with it is again, looking, looking locally, what can I do every day to make things better here? Make things better for the people that, you know, that Planned Parenthood serves um, in the communities we serve here. How can we make things better? How can we keep working collaboratively with our elected leaders here in California? Um, because otherwise, it can, I think, feel so overwhelming. Um, that you can be kind of paralyzed by that. Um, so just focusing every day, what can we do today to make things better? Um, or to make some kind of progress or to help people um, is is how I'm uh, you know, coping with it. Um, and it's a great place to work, a great people, they're so dedicated. Um, and we have a lot of great support in the community, which which is wonderful too.
Yeah. Yeah, and and you know, California, of course, is a very progressive state and uh, it's, you know, a place where um, people can feel as though their their opinions are being respected and heard and they can have opportunities for reproductive healthcare and healthcare in general through Planned Parenthood. I wanted to ask you, Lucy, if you could just talk a little bit about Planned Parenthood for, you know, for for viewers, for watchers. Some people tend to think, um, you know, they can know Planned Parenthood with abortion and that's the only thing that and they get all fired up over that, you know, if they position. But Planned Parenthood is really about so much more than that. And can you just like, just for a couple of minutes, talk about that, that definition, when we think of Planned Parenthood, it's really about this. It's not just about this one thing that gets all the attention from people who, for whatever reason, you know, are, don't like Planned Parenthood.
Yeah.
You know?
Well, it's it's a healthcare provider. And and I think the way that I can answer that question is just what it personally has has meant for me. Um, so you know, I grew up in a, you know, Latino household. My my parents are are not conservative. You know, they're they're pretty, they're pretty progressive. They're they're that unique group that has gotten, I think, more progressive as they've gotten older. My dad was a big Bernie supporter, like he was one of those Bernie Latino uh, older men. Um, but you know, sexual and reproductive health was not something we talked about at home. Um, I I don't think my my parents knew how to talk about it, you know, with with their three daughters. Um, so I didn't, we didn't talk about it at home. Um, I did not have really great uh, sex ed um, in high school. Um, so I was really unprepared um, and uneducated. Um, and you know, I I found myself, you know, in college um, needing information. Wanting to know how I could take care of myself, how could, you know, um, is birth control something that I should, you know, be on? Um, but not having any of that information. This is the early years of like, I didn't have before the iPhone, like before, you know, you had access to all that kind of information on your phone. Um, but I knew Planned Parenthood was a place at the time, you know, for for women to go to, to to get answers to their questions. Uh, so I called the, you know, whatever phone number it used to be back then to find an address. And and got the address for, you know, the local Planned Parenthood, took a bus by myself to get there. And it was really the first time that I felt affirmed and respected in uh, healthcare-like setting ever. Um, you know, I was treated with so much compassion um, and no judgment. You know, here I was, this, you know, Stanford student who was clueless about my body. And there was no, there was no judgment. There was no, no, they didn't, you know, they did, they didn't want me to feel ashamed. Um, and they provided me with information patiently um, and took care of me. And I've remembered that, you know, to this day. Um, and that's the, that's what Planned Parenthood means. Um, and it's what I've heard from so many other, you know, friends and community members. It's a place you can go to ask questions, to feel respected um, without judgment about topics that you may not necessarily feel comfortable talking about with maybe your primary care physician or with your family. Um, or with other people in your life, um, whether that's, you know, cancer screenings or uh, STIs, um, STI treatment and testing. Um, you know, and of course, you know, family planning uh, and making a decision about whether or not to end a pregnancy. Um, those are, those are all the most, you know, uh, private and personal, you know, decisions about your healthcare and your life. Um, and Planned Parenthood is one of those places where you can go um, and be taken care of um, and be affirmed and, you know, have be be really empowered to make your own decisions.
Yeah. Yeah, well, that's well said. That's really explains that context and that lends really well. And you know, I think a lot of people who criticize Planned Parenthood, um, they may not need those services, like that, that, that are medical needs are not uniform and and the same And so I think a lot of those voices you hear about um, what Planned Parenthood is, you know, are people who aren't going to be in a situation like you were in. So respect that people are in different places and they need different attention and different answers and different um, areas of feeling safe than, you know, some dude who's just like, no, you know, it's like, that's, that's not your experience. So maybe, maybe you don't have the expertise there to talk about that, you know, so
Yeah.
I think that that's uh, it's good that we respect everybody's own paths and that there are organizations that can help you and other women um, in those situations, because they're they're very well, well needed. Um, and that's a good transition. You are a Stanford graduate and I know that um, you know, you should be very proud of that. And I wanted to talk to you about your your story a little bit. And I know a little bit about your story because we've had a conversation in the past about it. But um, I mean, I think that as much as you can tell it and talk about what you had to experience growing up and the help you received in order to to go to college. You are a role model. Every time you tell that story, there's somebody who's going to hear it and see see themselves in you. And they're going to be inspired and empowered. So can you just talk a little bit about where you grew up and your story and, you know, what education meant to you? And just that sort of, uh, you know, the early years of
Well, I I think I do want to, you know, pay uh, homage to, you know, um, my my grandparents. Um, my, uh, and I've I've had, you know, opportunities now that I'm a little older to unpack more of that family history and 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 learn more. Um, so my grandfather was a bracero farm worker in the Salinas Valley in California in the nineteen uh, forties. Um, and you know, we, I've been able to, you know, he passed, you know, uh, in the nineteen fifties. Um, so you know, I never grew up hearing, you know, knowing him, of course. Um, but you know, trying to piece together, you know, what that experience must have been like. Um, you know, my mom has his bracero card, uh, you know, with his picture and where he was. Um, and so then, you know, my grandmother was younger than I am today when she was widowed um, with five kids um, in in Mexico. And she came here to Los Angeles on her own um, to work, to provide for her kids. And um, my grandmother passed away a few years ago. But I was able to unearth unearth this, I think, eighth or ninth grade uh, school project where you interviewed someone to do this oral history. And it's on this old cassette tape. I've got to figure out how to get it on like a um, a more, a more well-preserved method.
Digital.
But it's, right, but it's her telling this story of coming here on her own. Um, and doing all kinds of jobs, like she, and and part of me is like, how much is this is is lore and legend and how much is true? Um, because she talks about, you know, working as a carpenter and working for a phone company and cleaning houses and working in a munitions factory and all these really great stories. Um, but I think both of those really show you, um, you know, this heritage of working hard. Um, and 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 that being kind of the the center of of what you do in your life is you work hard to to provide for your family. Uh, my mom was the first woman in her family to go to college. Um, she went to UCLA, um, grew up in East LA. Um, and was one of those first Chicano classes in the nineteen seventies uh, to be at UCLA. So she's got some fun stories about what that was like. Um, and so then, you know, my, I have two younger sisters. Um, we mostly grew up in different parts of uh, Southeast LA County. Um, and primarily in Downey, which is a, you know, very much Mexican-American, you know, community working class and kind of lower middle class. It's it's, I think they refer to it as that like second step um, immigrant community. Uh, so we've got a little bit more homeownership and things like that. Uh, there's a great community to grow up in. Um, and from the time I was a kid, you know, my parents instilled in us that education was um, the 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 way that you could advance. Um, and the way that you could could open doors to 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 provide for 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 a life. Um, and I think really importantly, because I was one of three girls. My dad, who I always tease him and and tell him that he's the first feminist that I had in my family. Because from the time we were kids, he always told us, I want you to be able to take care of yourself. Um, I don't want you to have to rely on a a spouse um, or anyone else. Like you need to, you know, work hard, you need to work twice as hard for half as much. Um, and and be able to stand on your own. Um, so I had that running in my mind, like my whole, like upbringing. And then being in school, you know, I really credit, you know, some key teachers in my life. Because not every teacher was supportive. Um, you know, there's some of those stories too, but I focus on the good. And that was, you know, a handful of teachers, really from elementary school all the way to high school, who who believed in me. And 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 helped me believe in myself. Um, and didn't tell me no, didn't put limits on on what I could do or what I could achieve. Um, so when, I think I've told you this before, when I saw Stanford as like a football team. Um, and I saw the pictures of the campus, which are beautiful, but didn't know, you know, that Stanford was this, you know, really hard school to get into. When I said that to a teacher in like ninth or tenth grade. Um, Mr. Darstad and Mr. Glasser, my high school um, history teachers. When I told them, I want to go to Stanford, they both said, okay, you know, let's, let's figure out a plan for that. They could have just as easily laughed or chuckled or said like, oh, you know, let's have some backup schools or, you know, oh, that's a really hard school. Like, no, they said, okay, let's figure out how to do that. Um, and so I believed that I that I could do it. Um, and we we made that plan. They're like, okay, that you've got to take every AP class and you've got to get a, you know, as high a score on your SAT as you can and it's going to cost a boatload of money. So you need to, you know, figure out some scholarships, um, you know, and I just, you know, worked hard and had their support and of course, the support of my my parents. Um, and, you know, ma- and and did it and made it. And it was, it was great. And it was a great experience being there.
Yeah, the greatest gift that somebody can give is just making somebody realize that they can believe in themselves, you know, and
Yes.
It seems like, it's like, seems like such a little thing, but it's, it's, it's remarkable how many people um, need validation outward in order to 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 feel like they can do something. And if you can help somebody understand in them, like, I can do anything. That opens the doors to everything and
Absolutely.
Your teachers were able to to do that to you. And that's one of those things where it's such a subtle thing. Had they chuckled, had they laughed or had they said, let's be realistic, or any of those little things that people do that they don't mean to. But they sort of just very subconsciously and very quiet try to minimize the the curiosity or ambition or or um, desire that people have, that can have an effect. And that's why it's always good to, when people talk about their dreams, to just hear them and say, yes, you can do it. Because it is possible, but the the first step to be possible is wanting it. And if you feel like I shouldn't want it, then it's never, it's never going to happen. So how was Stanford? Was it, is it hard? Was it, I mean, how did you work through it? Did you figure out? You know, did you get scholarships every year? Or tell me about how you were able to, because one thing to get in, it's one other thing to finish, you know?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I remember, you know, another funny story is, you know, back then. Um, you know, you get the big envelope or you get the small envelope at home. Um, and I remember, I I still remember driving up to my driveway um, coming home from school and seeing the big envelope, like, like right in front of the door. The mailman hadn't put it, like shoved it in the mailbox, like he put it right in front of the door. Um, and, you know, of course, I was so excited. And and when my dad came home and I told him that I had gotten into Stanford, he swore. Like, I won't repeat what he said, but he, his first reaction was, oh, you know, and and freaked out. Um, and and he, and he immediately also said, okay, we'll, we'll figure it out, right? Because we knew how expensive it was. Um, and I think, you know, whether it was being fortunate or just being a good advocate, my mom was on the phone with that financial aid office. As much as she could be to say, what can we do? What, you know, what scholarship can she apply for? Um, my dad was a a mail carrier. Um, and his uh, union was the first one that gave me a a scholarship. Um, when he went and asked, you know, if the union had, you know, college scholarships. Um, and, you know, just pieced pieced it together. Um, Stanford really came through and, you know, gave me a lot of merit-based um, grants and scholarships to help, uh, help make it possible. Um, and help make it possible, not only for, you know, my parents, of course, had to pay for some of it and I took on some loans. But so that it wasn't something that was going to be, you know, a huge burden for me. Um, you know, I've, I I'm still paying them off, but it's, but it's doable, um, right? And so I really credit them. As a private institution, they can do things that other colleges can't. I completely recognize that. Um, but they made it possible. Um, I worked two or three jobs the entire time that I was there. Um, you know, on-campus jobs, you know, whatever I could, I could find and and make work. So that was hard. Um, and I really pushed myself, you know, I I double majored um, and was often taking twenty or twenty-one units every quarter, um, the whole time I was there. And then, of course, really involved with a lot of stuff. Um, as a student, um, I was first elected to something as a, as an undergrad to their undergraduate senate. Um, and just worked hard. I mean, I felt, I think I felt like I had worked so hard to get there that I wanted to take advantage of every possible experience and opportunity I could in the four years I was there. Uh, and I've made lifelong friends and, yeah, it was hard. And I've made lifelong friends and yeah, it was hard academically, uh, but it was also a wonderful, wonderful place.
Yeah, that, that's great. And I like what you said about, just to go back to it, you were told you have to work twice as hard for half as much. And I think that, that's something that, that we do. And it's also something that we do that we don't complain about. We don't advertise. We, we just do it because we're we're humble, you know, and I'm using the weak here, you know, in terms of the, um, you know, Mexican-American Latino community, um, you know, my experience. We work really hard, cause our family members worked really hard. Like they did multiple jobs, non-stop, constantly. And it was just the norm. And you didn't go there and like tell people, I have to work hard. You just did it, cause you had to do whatever you have to do for your family, you know? And, and in your case, it's all worth it, cause what is it, what's, why is everybody working so hard? So the next generation of kids can go to school and have it a little bit easier and better than they did, you know, that's it's all about the kids. So that's really, uh, inspiring story that, that you share. You know, so, um, this has been a really good conversation, Lucy. Um, I just wanna wrap up, kinda, kinda going full circle. You've been walking on a lot of doors all summer and you're gonna continue to do it where we have September, we have Labor Day, it's sort of the unofficial kickoff, you know? I guess the official, you know, kickoff. But it gets real serious, you know, after Labor Day in terms of winning. And so, uh, can you just send us off with, uh, just again, you know, why, why you're the right choice and, you know, what you wanna do for Galita?
Yeah, thank you. Well, yeah, I mean, I'm, this is a big, you know, group, uh, uh, effort in many ways. Um, you know, of course I'm out there, you know, sharing my message, but my husband is, you know, canvassing with me, you know, he's, uh, I call him my like ca- chief canvasser slash photographer slash, you know, canvas lit, you know, packet, but, you know, person. Um, we're all, we're all pitching in, um, because, you know, I think we as a family, you know, are really invested in this too. Um, you know, I'm gonna be spending as much time as I can between now and, uh, Election Day, just talking to voters. And, you know, if they don't already know me, you know, getting to know them and getting to know what I wanna do, you know, as a council member. And again, you know, I think for me, it's, I want to deliver on, you know, the services that we expect as residents for our community. Um, I wanna get things done. Um, I wanna see projects, you know, come to fruition. I think that's the great part about working in local, local issues is actually getting to see things, um, you know, done and in place. Um, I wanna do that. Um, I want to help work with neighborhood, neighbors to plan for our future, especially in our district. Like what's the future? How do we, how do we make sure Lake Close Carneros is, isn't a good place moving forward? How do we, you know, address, you know, as I've mentioned, you know, bicycle and pedestrian networks, um, you know, across the district and across the city. Um, we've got the foothills right up, right up here. You know, the holiday fire was just a block or two away from me. Um, and it was, you know, really alarming for our neighborhood to just experience that threat of wildfire up close and personal. Um, so how can we be best prepared for that? So I feel like I am, you know, the, the best choice to move us forward, um, into the future. Um, and that I'm gonna be out there, you know, get, wanting your input, um, as residents. I'm gonna be really proactive. Um, and accessible, you know, to, to residents. Um, and I think that's what we all want in, in a local, uh, representative. Someone that you know, someone that you, you feel comfortable calling up and explaining an issue and someone who's going to follow through. Um, to get back to you, um, and explain how things are working. Um, and that's what, who I wanna be as a council member. And so I'm gonna be focused on getting that message out to, to voters, um, and working with volunteers to knock on those doors. And, um, really look forward to it. It's been really great so far.
Great. And I don't know if Lake Close Carneros is in your, uh, your, uh, District One. But you, uh, an unofficial act of business, uh, 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 off the record request, if you will. There's a tree and there's a tree swing and it's, you know, there for years and it's on and off and, and, um, right, most recently I've been there, like broke, it snapped, you know? So I think it's like a neighbor or somebody in the area.
I think, I know exactly what you're talking about. Yeah.
And, and, and they'll fix it. And then, you know, anybody can come by and swing on the tire. And it's really fun, like unofficial sort of thing, probably not entirely. No, it's totally safe, you know? But it's not really like a city thing, but it is a, a neighborhood thing. So, you know, maybe you can take a little stroll there.
Yeah, it's those little things that make such a big difference for, for people. Absolutely.
Yeah, no, and I, I lo- I grew up in Galita, so I love, uh, um, uh, Lake Close Caneros and all these little places around town. It's, it's hard for me to see it as a district, because it's districts, cause it's like, it's all so small. But, but it is what it is and we do get, uh, a new kind of representation that way. So positives to that. But thanks a lot, Lucy, Lucy Reyes Martin, for, uh, taking the time to talk on this, this hot afternoon and
Thank you.
Heatwave. So, um, good luck to you and I'm sure I'll see you down the road.
Yeah, I'm off to actually a neighborhood, uh, barbecue slash, you know, hosing down all the kids who are hot and sweaty.
Oh, good. All right. Yeah, that, those are the fun times. Okay.
Okay, thank you so much.